Bienvenidos a la reunión de 4 de junio de 2019 para el Consejo de la Ciudad de Port Angeles. Vamos a dar las voces, por favor.
Mayor Brooke.
Presente.
Deputada Mayor Dexter.
Here.
Consejera membera French.
Here.
Consejera membera Kidd.
Here.
Consejera membera Meredith.
Here.
Consejera membera Moran.
Here.
Consejera membera Sherman Warren.
Here.
Acton City Manager and Attorney Board.
Present.
Muy bien, gracias. Por favor, levantémonos al pleno.
Aplausos a la Frontera de Estados Unidos y a la República, en la que se sustentan una nación, bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Hola, todos. Hoy tenemos algunas proclamaciones. Empezaremos con el Festival Maritime de Mark Appshire.
Ciertamente, no estás asustado.
Bueno, empezaremos con la Proclamación y Reconocimiento del Festival Maritime de Port Angeles. Las organizaciones, como el Port de Port Angeles, Port Angeles Yacht Club, Chamber of Commerce, y el Centro de Historia de la Antigüedad del Norte, así como numerosas empresas y individuos locales, han colaborado para crear y producir el segundo Festival Maritime de Port Angeles en ubicaciones de todo el río Port Angeles. El Festival Maritime es una celebración de la rica historia y el futuro prometido de las actividades marítimas en Port Angeles y la Península del Norte. El Festival celebra las tradiciones marítimas nuevas y antiguas, con música en vivo, exhibiciones de barcos, tours de buques, pintura facial y diversión para toda la familia en los días 8 y 9 de junio. Las festividades comenzarán con la llegada de la Lady Washington, una replica en escala total del barco original que en 1788 se convirtió en el primer barco estadounidense que llegaba a la costa occidental de América del Norte. Y el Chieftain Hawaii, diseñado por el arquitecto naval Raymond H. Richards para reemplazar los barcos pasajeros anteriores colonializados que comerciaban entre las ciudades y pueblos de la costa Atlántica. Además, otros barcos y barcos conocidos para la gracia del puerto de Port Angeles incluirán el barco de control de la costa de Estados Unidos, el barco de protección de la costa de la Guardia Coast de Estados Unidos, el piloto de Pugent Sound, el barco de la Guardia Coast de Estados Unidos 33 de propósito de la policía, el aero launch boat, y más. El Festival ofrecerá tours y navegación en los barcos antiguos, información histórica en vivo y más tarde, una demostración de rescate de la costa de la Guardia Coast de Estados Unidos en el puerto de Port Angeles. Los viajeros del Festival pueden descubrir la belleza del puerto de Port Angeles desde el punto de vista de un kayak o un viaje narrativo a través del porto de Port Angeles, el armario de la lotería de la marina y las fábricas de fabricación de barcos. Ahora, por lo tanto, yo, Sissy Brooke, Mayor, a cargo del Consejo de la Ciudad de Port Angeles, quiero agradecer a los sponsors y a todos aquellos que contribuyeron, tiempo, esfuerzo y apoyo para hacer que el Festival Maritime de Port Angeles sea un éxito. Mark, quiero agradecerte mucho porque el primer festival fue absolutamente maravilloso. Voy a pasar el micrófono y dile decirle un par de palabras.
Claro, daré un par de actualizaciones. Mi chef canceló nosotros.
Oh, no.
Así que ellos se cancelaron por razones mecánicas. Así que solo tendremos a la Lady Washington. La otra edición es... Algunos de ustedes pueden recordar que solíamos tener un festival de esculturas de arena. También estamos trayendo las esculturas de arena. Esa es una nueva edición. Así que estarán en Hollywood Beach. Creo que estarán en Burbank o algo así en lugar de tratar. Y la última actualización es que el rescate de la costa del aero avión de la Guardia Coast va a ser en ambos lunes y domingo a las 1:00 cada día. Así que tenemos los tickets todavía disponibles para las navegaciones y será divertido. También quiero decirles muchas gracias al personal de la ciudad de Port Angeles, como siempre son muy ayudosos y nos están ayudando a hacer esto suceder. Y también a sus propios sponsors como los Brothers Maine y la Marina Aeronave y Armstrong Marine. Esto no sucede sin mucha ayuda de la comunidad. Tengo que mencionar al Consejo de Port Angeles, quien también ha puesto algunos dólares para hacer que el Festival Maritime suceda. Gracias a la comunidad hacemos esto porque sentimos que hay una rica y importante corriente, pasado y futuro en las industrias marítimas en nuestra comunidad. No somos solo una ciudad de Denver. También hacemos un montón de cosas en el marino. Así que eso es lo que es este festival y es una forma de empezar el verano. Así que vayan.
Muchas gracias. Nuestra segunda proclamación trata de Pink Up Port Angeles. ¡Vamos, señoras! ¡Vamos! Muy bien, aquí está la proclamación en reconocimiento de Pink Up Port Angeles, semana de Junio 15 a 22 de junio de 2019. El cáncer es una palabra que expresa miedo a toda nuestra familia y comunidad. Además, el cáncer es una de las palabras más devastadoras a oír de un proveedor de salud. Además, el cáncer es una enfermedad que ha tocado la vida de innumerables personas en todo el mundo. Además, el cáncer es una palabra que une a la gente en amor y apoyo para luchar, para encontrar una cura. Además, el cáncer es una enfermedad, advertencia, amenaza, oportunidad de investigación y cura. Además, el cáncer es una guerra que estamos luchando y ganando muchas rondas. Además, el cáncer es una palabra que queremos en los libros de historia que no se fearsen más. Además, Surapti's International de Port Angeles invita a toda la comunidad a unirse y dedica esta semana a luchar contra el cáncer a través de la conciencia, la advocacy y la acción, convirtiendo Port Angeles en rosa. Por lo tanto, seremos conocidos como Port Angeles para estos importantes días celebrando el éxito de la operación Uplift y su compromiso de traer asistencia a pacientes de cáncer y sobrevivientes. Ahora, por lo tanto, yo, Sissy Brooke, Mayor, a cargo del Consejo de la Ciudad de Port Angeles, quiero proclamar la semana de Junio 15 a 22 de junio de 2019, Pink Up Port Angeles Week en Port Angeles para ayudar a aumentar la conciencia del cáncer y la prevención. Así que gracias, señoras, por estar aquí. Voy a pasar el micrófono. Si ustedes pueden presentarse y terminará aquí.
Mayor Doughton.
Sally Pearson.
Marc Perrault.
Suzie Reddick.
Lizzy Nunez.
Derek Riley.
Oreo.
Presidente de los torneos de golf. Signen.
Sandy Raddell.
Patty Gray.
Erin Callis. Y la consejera membera Sheri Kidd, también de Surapti's. Y todas estas señoras trabajan duro para recoger fondos que permanecen en la comunidad 100%. Ano después, año después, anochecemos dinero para ayudar a prevenir el cáncer y asistir a los sobrevivientes de cáncer. Este es nuestro hogar local, cuidando a nuestros pueblos locales. Así que todas estas señoras merecen una mano. Gracias.
Muy bien, tenemos uno más. Patrick McGinnis. ¡Ah, maravilloso! Vayan. Así que Patrick. Tenemos algunas cosas emocionantes aquí para entregar a los estudiantes. ¿Quieres llevarlos a los estudiantes y presentar a todos?
Sí, soy Patrick McGinnis. Maestro de producción video y periodismo de transmisión en la Escuela High de Port Angeles. Y este año he tenido cinco estudiantes nominados por los premios Estudios Emmy por parte de la Academia Nacional de Artes y Ciencias Inteligentes. Cuatro de los cinco están aquí hoy. Así que Malik Braun, Carter Home, Ethaniel Perry y Colby Batman. ¿Pueden irse? Este fin de semana, en realidad este sábado, estaremos en Seattle en los premios regionales Emmy. Y espero que estemos nominados en dos categorías diferentes. Colby y Ethaniel están nominados en la categoría de efectos especiales y animación para un corto filme que produjeron llamado Super Action Riot. Y Carter y Malik, junto con otro estudiante, Ethan, que no puede estar aquí esta noche, está nominado en la categoría de video musical para una canción original, un video musical llamado P-A-H-S. Así que...
Así que supongo que les daré los premios. Aquí está para Malik. Felicidades. Ethan, ¿verdad?
Ethan podría estar aquí o algo así.
Oh, Ethan, no es eso.
Sí.
Carter. Aquí está.
Gracias.
Y felicidades. Colby.
Gracias.
Si pueden sentarse, porque creo que sería genial que todos lo fueran a conocer. Y Ethaniel. So you all, muchas gracias. Felicidades. Espero el mejor. Haces un trabajo increíble enseñando a estos chicos. Felicidades a todos. Por aquí. Muy bien. Smile para la cámara. Gracias. Esto es realmente emocionante. Espero que tengamos buenos sueños cuando vuelvan. Así que ahora vamos a tener la sesión de comentarios públicos. Y creo que vamos a dejar que el jefe se baje.
Madre Mayor, Consejo, para la sesión de comentarios públicos. Quiero anunciar que nuestro sistema de luz no funciona esta noche. Así que nuestro plan original era que el jefe Smith hubiera una ronda. Dos al final. Entonces me di cuenta que mi oficina... Tengo puestos. Así que vamos a tener un recorte de tiempo.
Genial, gracias. Y amigos, tenemos dos audiencias públicas hoy. Así que si se trata de una audiencia pública, no pasen este tiempo. Esto es solo para comentarios públicos sobre todo. Tendrán tiempo para hablar sobre comentarios públicos durante el periodo de comentarios públicos. Y los que se han inscrito, tenemos a Joseph Neves. Neves.
Necesito hablar sobre la última audiencia pública.
Christopher. Parece que dice capital facilities plan. Christopher, ¿estás bien con el waiting? Bien. Y Mark Grass, también dice capital T I P.
Sí, es así.
Bien. Oh, Mace. Oh, Mace Grass, perdón. Y luego tenemos a Marilyn Smith. Marilyn Smith, sidewalk. Voy a empezar aquí porque también tengo algo sobre capital facilities. Bien, Marilyn Smith, Port Angeles. Eso es lo que tengo que decir hoy, ¿verdad? Así que durante más de 20 años he sido residente de Port Angeles. Vivo en lo que has identificado como el sur de Port Angeles, lo cual me gusta un poco. Estoy al lado de una calle arterial que también se convierte en una arteria colectiva. Así que Mount Angeles es mi propiedad. Durante más de 20 años he preguntado si Mount Angeles obtendría una sidewalk correcta. La respuesta es siempre, no ahora. Y yo me rindo. La ciudad ha identificado la calle Mount Angeles como una puerta importante para la ciudad, una de nuestras arterias más activas. Justo como en el último plan comprensivo, el objetivo es crear sidewalks donde no hay ninguno. Mi pregunta es cuándo. En este momento, los niños o manejan a la escuela de Franklin o deben estar en el autobús más temprano porque no pueden caminar en Port or Mount Angeles. Es demasiado peligroso. Si sidewalks o bloques de la comunidad saludable, vivo en una zona muy enferma. Nuestros decisiones son cruzar un crosswalk peligroso, sin marcar, en intersecciones irregularmente, para llegar a la familia, el camino realmente un poco desagradable que no quieren ver que se creó para nosotros, que se meanderá. No hacen nada con él si llueve. Está completamente nevado. O puedes caminar por el pequeño camino estrecho en el lado oriental de Mount Angeles. Por cierto, si vas por el camino del parque nacional, hay cuatro caminos de conducción que tienes que cruzar. Y los turistas realmente no miran. Así que casi está llevando tu vida en tus propias manos. Así que si caminamos por la puerta estrecha adyacente a la planta de E&amp;R, que es leasing por O&amp;P, hay autos, camiones, casas motoras que se acercan a 30 millas por hora, cien metros de ti. Todo verano, las semillas crecen en la gata, el pequeño culvert que tenemos allí, y se usa para intersecciones blindadas. Cada verano, decenas de autos se desplazan de la carretera a la aguja. Es peligroso. Necesitamos un sidewalk. Necesitábamos un sidewalk hace 20 años.
30 segundos.
Gracias. Gracias. ¿Alguien más en la audiencia que quisiera dirigir el Consejo?
Disculpen, dispositivos electrónicos. Mi nombre es Jeff Bowman. Vivo en el Cercano Canyon en Port Angeles. Y no esperaba hablar porque pensé que habría un poco más de información como parte de la reconocimiento de estudiante Emmy. Pero solo quiero que el beneficio del Consejo y de la audiencia entiendan que este es solo el segundo año del programa que Patrick ahora está ejecutando en tiempo completo en la escuela. Y no solo incluye esas actividades de premios Emmy nombradas, quienes también recibieron premios Emmy el año pasado. Es unprecedented tener dos años en su fila, especialmente para una escuela random. Tengo el placer de servir con la consejera membera Rand y otros en un comité de asesoramiento del programa Patrick. Y otra dimensión de ese programa es un programa de teatro. Y quiero destacar el hecho de que ese programa está equipando a los estudiantes para hacer uso pleno de nuestro centro de arte de actuación en la escuela, que sin su crecimiento de habilidades, no sería capaz de ser usado porque estamos en un déficit serio de habilidades técnicas necesarias para operar la fábrica. Hay un grupo que está trabajando en hacer una serie de mejoras y hay mejoras sustanciales hechas. Muchos de ellos están diseñados para dotar con un currículum de teatro del siglo 21, así que los estudiantes están usando este equipo moderno que se está trayendo. Pero sin eso, el Festival de Fuca, la Sinfónica, todas las organizaciones que tienen la oportunidad de usar esa fábrica no serían capaces. Así que es un programa extremadamente importante y exitoso que está haciendo mucho más que apenas educando a los estudiantes. Y les agradezco a todos por reconocer esa parte del programa. Gracias.
Gracias. Y es verdad, ese programa es increíble, las cosas que han hecho. ¿Alguien más en la audiencia que quisiera dirigir el Consejo en este momento? Muy bien, con eso, vamos a pasar a los temas tardíos. ¿Algunos temas tardíos del Consejo? ¿Señor Gorman tiene un tema tardío?
Solo uno. Y envié la información al Consejo esta semana pasada. Es una solicitud de los votantes legales para usar el logo como parte de su brochura para anunciar un programa educativo que los votantes legales están produciendo y se mostrará en diferentes áreas de la región en diferentes áreas de la región y es una historia de agua. Envíe a la Consejo toda la información que tengo sobre él. No he tenido contacto personal con estas personas, pero envíe toda la información. Así que este es un tema tardío propuesto. Está llegando tarde porque como entiendo, los votantes legales quieren imprimir sus brochures sobre este programa, así que están esperando saber si incluirán el logo de la ciudad.
Así que Consejo, supongo que necesitaríamos que cuatro amigos aprobaran la adición de esto a la agenda. Mayor, ¿hay alguien aquí de los votantes legales para dirigir esto? No creo que estén aquí.
Soy un miembro de los votantes legales y he sido parte de este grupo de estudio en mi capacidad personal y profesional, así que puedo hablar un poco más adelante. Sería útil.
Así que creo que vale la pena hablar una conversación. Bien. ¿Quieres que haga una pregunta del Consejo?
Sherman Warren. Darle un poco más de información. Lo welcome.
Y esta es una de las cosas raras de nuestro procedimiento, donde terminamos discutiendo un tema antes de decidir si ir a la audiencia. Pero dado que toma cuatro votos, eso es bastante rápido. Así que hace varios años, tal vez hace unos años, un número de miembros de la Comunidad Legalela de Colom empezaron un grupo de estudios de agua para ver problemas de agua en la Comunidad Colom, viendo la disponibilidad de agua y la sostenibilidad en el futuro, específicamente enfocándose en el desastre y mirando hacia el oeste desde ahí. Así que ese grupo está viendo, haciendo una serie educativa, comenzando por nadar y trabajando hacia el oeste. Y esta es una solicitud. Mi entendimiento es una solicitud para el apoyo de la ciudad sobre eso. Eso es lo que tengo.
Y puedo agregar que si requiere que sepa el dinero, cuando vengan aquí y hagan la educación de agua para Port Angeles, su solicitud podría ser potencialmente el uso del burn burton, ese tipo de cosas, pero eso es todo. Así que creo que es un esfuerzo realmente valioso. Así que yo lo apoyo.
Apoyo al esfuerzo y al programa que la ley está apoyando. La única preocupación que tendría sería dar nuestro logo a una organización que puede considerarse quasi política, pero en mi investigación no he encontrado que los votantes legales apoyan candidatos o algo de ese tipo. Así que esa es la única preocupación que tengo, pero a continuación, mirando a la organización Degro, aunque tienen posiciones sobre diferentes cosas, nunca he visto que apoyen a candidatos en serio. Y si apoyaran a candidatos, yo votaría no en esto porque eso inferiría que estábamos apoyando una organización quasi política, lo cual creo que es inapropiado. Pero habiéndolo dicho, apoyo a este tema porque no son, en mi estimación, una organización quasi política que hace eso. Y obviamente creo que el programa es también valioso.
Pasamos a la agenda de los temas tardíos.
Gracias. Creo que tenemos cuatro ahora. Pasaremos a otros consideraciones como el segundo. Muy bien, pasemos a la agenda de consentimiento. ¿Algunos temas de la agenda de consentimiento que alguien quiera pedir más información? Así que lo que hay que hacer. El minuto del Consejo de la Ciudad de Mayo del 21 de mayo de 2019, el reporte de expensas del 11 de mayo de 2019 al 24 de mayo de 2019, en la cantidad de 2 millones 389 dólares y 665 dólares y 97 centavos. Reemplazo de la operación de vehículo número 6902, reemplazo del vehículo del departamento de parques número 4400, asuntos de impuestos de alojamiento y acuerdo profesional de servicios de Wexner. Pasamos a la agenda de consentimiento.
Me gustaría, tema número seis, solo agradecerle al señor Wexner por entrar durante la ausencia de Alison. Llegó en un momento muy ocupado. Él está ganando dinero. Y estamos muy agradecidos por sus servicios. Solo quiero decirle gracias.
Aquí, aquí.
Gracias y lo welcome.
Todos nos sentimos así. Muy bien, tenemos una petición en la mesa. ¿Tenemos un segundo? Oh, sí, perdón. Bien. Así que cualquier discusión adicional. Todos los que están a favor de la petición, por favor digan aye.
Aye.
¿Alguien oposito? Bien, pasa unanimamente. Así que tenemos un par de minutos. Bueno, dado que hemos discutido el logo, podemos probablemente dejarlo en los próximos tres minutos. ¿Hay...? Hagamos eso primero y luego vamos a la audiencia pública. ¿Eso tiene sentido? Porque tenemos tres minutos. Así que, nuevamente, necesitaríamos una petición para permitir al partido de los votantes legales usar el logo como una prueba de que somos un socio en apoyo a este esfuerzo educativo.
Pasamos a la audiencia de la ciudad a la solicitud de los votantes legales de la Comunidad Colom para la cooperación de la ciudad en el proyecto de educación de agua del área de nadar en 2019 y 2020 para apoyar en las áreas de venues, making contacts y promoción.
Segundo. Bien. ¿Hay alguna discusión adicional?
Me gustaría si el señor Gorman pudiera revisar su material antes que se lo entregue. Los votantes legales usando nuestro logo, me gustaría si pudieran revisarlo y verlo antes de que lo usaran públicamente. Sería razonable.
Seguro que harán esa solicitud y pedirán que nos demuestren la prueba antes de que se lo publiquen.
Me gustaría que lo hicieras, asegurarte de sentirte agradecida.
Así que...
Supongo que también quiero decir que he estado en varias reuniones de ese grupo de estudios de agua a principios, solo en mi capacidad personal. Y creo que el objetivo es realmente solo educación pública, ya que saben que estos problemas de agua se volverán más relevantes. Han sido muy relevantes en el nadar específicamente, pero creo que vamos a ver que se volverán más relevantes en el sur de la Comunidad de California también. Así que creo que hay una necesidad de un grupo no partidista como este para hacer buena educación pública. Así que yo apoyo totalmente eso. Y creo que las personas que están haciendo esto definitivamente tienen buena... El grupo que, cuando he estado en reuniones, tiene una experiencia muy buena, experiencia amplia, y creo que harán un trabajo muy bueno con esto.
Y quiero agregar también que en agosto las conversaciones comenzarán sobre poner ese mismo foco educativo en Port Angeles. Así que eso comenzará esas conversaciones antes de que esos informes se cesen. Bien, tenemos una petición en la mesa y un segundo. ¿Cualquier discusión adicional? Todos los que están a favor de la petición, por favor digan aye.
Aye.
¿Alguien oposito? Bien, pasa unanimamente. Gracias. Y es las 6:30. Exacto. Así que comenzaremos la audiencia pública del 2020 al 2025, Plan de capital facilities y Plan de mejora de la transportación.
Así que Mayor y Consejo, tenemos dos audiencias públicas esta noche. Ambas involucran excesos de cuestiones y muchos detalles de lo que el personal querría sugerir. Es que tomaremos y dejaremos en nota cualquier pregunta que surja esta noche y responderemos a esas preguntas en la próxima audiencia. Ambas volverán a la próxima audiencia. Y eso está en vista de la naturaleza detallada y extensa de cuestiones. La excepción sería si sentimos muy confiados que podemos tener una respuesta completa en un corto periodo de tiempo esta noche.
Gracias. All right, Jake, at the floor.
Thank you. I'm pretty meaningful. So I'm just going to really briefly go over the capital facilities plan process. I apologize when this will be a little bit retarded from our work session. And then just a high-level overview of the revenues and expenditures in the CFP and the cash flow as well. And then any time for questions that you may have. So the capital facilities plan allows us to take our limited resources and use them to the best of our ability. It helps us plan for spending and for funding sources for the projects that we have, as well as prioritize them and coordinate projects so that we have savings from those projects. And as well, it will help us reduce costs that are associated with unexpected or emergency spending due to a problem that we may have with some of our assets. So one of the other things that the capital facilities plan really allows us to do is put together an asset management plan. And so what you see in the CFP is really a seven-year kind of snapshot of what we plan for our projects and our assets. But it allows us to go beyond that. So we're already starting that process. Some of the funds, we have done that for, but we do intend to continue to do that. And we'll start to see that in the document as we go forward. So some of the ways that we prioritize and coordinate our projects are we look at keeping our rates consistent. So what we do is we take our seven-year projects and we average them out. And that's the amount that we put in the rates for the transfer. We do that to keep them fluctuating and to keep them consistent and stable. From the cash depreciation levels, we have in all areas except for general governmental and transportation, we are currently at a one-to-one cash depreciation level. And up note with those, at general governmental transportation, we are improving them over the years. It's a very slow process because they're based on affordability. And those tend to be areas where we sort of a little more, we are leveraging our projects by reworking projects to allow for things being done in the same areas that can be done at the same time. The CFP for 2020 to 2025 also does not include any new debt or any loans. And we use for prioritization, we do take into consideration the incremental maintenance of any assets or projects. So the CFP is an integral part to a lot of areas within the city. CFP is part of the comprehensive plan's requirement, but it also ties into the budget. So once the CFP is approved, it becomes part of the budget for the next coming year. We take the 20, for example, the 2020. As we move forward, we would take the projects that are approved and we put those into the budget. So it plays an important part there, as well as the strategic planning and long-range financial planning because we have to know what we're facing and what we need to be able to do to do that. And so then all of these things work into our yearly speed work plan. So the CFP process started late in January, and we went through April, working with departments, putting together the projects and estimates, and then meeting with the city manager and department directors as we go through and prioritize those. So the preliminary document was distributed on the 8th of May, and we met with UAC on the 14th of May. And we did receive a favorable recommendation on utility projects from the UAC. We also had a council work session on May 28th. And we had scheduled two public hearings, one tonight and one at the next council meeting on the 18th of June. So I just wanted to also note that as part of the council work session, on the 28th, there were two projects that came about that council requested for us to put into the CFP. And that was just to align the CFP with the AIA projects that were in the comprehensive plan. So those two projects were the P-10 Creek Daylight and the first in front, Decoupling. And so these projects primarily do not have any funding, so you don't see them on the active listings that were in the packet tonight, but they will be in the final budget or in the final CFP as we move forward. All right, so looking at funding sources, we try to keep them as consistent as possible because the majority of the funding sources do come from the utilities. We'll see some years, 2019, 2020, and 2021, where there's a little bit of an increase from those averages. And that's just because it's in large projects. And the light-up building that we're using reserves for. And we also have some grants that we're anticipating in the next couple of years. And so those have been included in here. So looking at the revenues by type and by year for all funds, you can see that the utilities really do have the biggest source of revenues for these capital projects. And just looking at the cream color down at the bottom, you can see that we're trying to keep them as consistent as possible for rates. The second largest source of revenues that we have for capital are grants. And then we do also leverage from donations, interest earned, real estate excise tax, transportation benefit district tax, and from the general funds. So looking at spending, you might notice that there are some years where we're spending quite a bit more than what the revenues would show or quite a bit less than what the revenues are. And that's because what we do is to keep projects consistent, to keep transfers consistent and rates consistent, we build up the reserves in capital. So we average it out. We make one transfer from each of the funds that would be affected. And then we build up for any large projects or large spending that we have. So some years, you'll see on spending an increase or decrease because of some of those large projects. So looking at the spending, there's a few large projects coming up. The first being the light operations building. That's a pretty good project that we have coming up in the next year. But also in 2021, we have Race Street, Hill Street, and Lincoln Street that we're planning for. So you can see that capital spending really doesn't follow any pattern. It can go from large projects primarily to a bunch of smaller projects. It's just what we forecast based on what we have available for staff time and for funding. So cash balances, there again, just showing that they can really be affected by those large projects. And there really isn't a pattern for capital spending. And so it's not uncommon to see the fluctuation kind of going up or down depending on whether we have a large project that we just finished and so we spent a lot, or a large project that we're trying to save up for. And so you'll see those cash balances go up. But I also did want to know, because as you look at these, some of them are quite large cash balances. Each one of these funds, the dollars in those cash balances are set aside for a specific project. And that's where the prioritization comes in. So if, for example, you wanted to reprioritize something, we would have to take funding from another project and apply it to that project and then start over with the transfers and the building up of the reserves for the project that we took planning from. So I just wanted to make aware of that as we move forward. So tonight, before we request that you open the public hearing and read the resolution, we are going to go in and see if there are any council questions that you may have. I have tonight Mary Stew French in the audience, who's the senior accountant who helps primarily put together the capital facilities and transportation improvement plan. So we will do our best to answer any questions that you may have prior to that.
All right, council, any questions? All right, seeing none. Then we will open the public hearing, first public hearing for the 2020 to 2025 Capital Facilities Plan and Transportation Improvement Plan. And I guess we'll read the resolution first, and then we'll get discussions from the audience. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the city's capital facilities plan for 2020-2025, which includes the city's transportation improvement program for the years 2020 to 2025. So with that, I know we've got a couple of people signed up for that. Joseph, did you want to begin?
Yes, you're welcome.
Mayor, may I remind you that we are timing for this one as well? So Cory, you can check.
Okay. So folks, you've got about three minutes.
Okay. I haven't worked from three black pine carts and bicycles. So bear with me. Where was number one? There we go. My name is Joseph Nevis. I live on 1702 Melody Circle, apartment 316 in Port Angeles. Last time I spoke here, I talked about planting a seed. Tonight, I hope the water at a bed. If you recall, at that time, I talked about the proposal to build a bridge that would connect East Lorison Boulevard from Gulf Course Road to Lorison Boulevard and Arthur Penice College. I also brought up the need for a bridge. Tonight, I wish to speak of some practical benefits of this proposal. I provide some food for thought. There are three bullet points to ponder. One, no cost for land. The city not only owns the land, but has a long-established right-of-way for both Lorison Boulevard and the Penn Street Junction. There's no condemnation of property here. No protracted court battles over eminent domain. And except for a few shed encroachments along the right-of-way and utility poles, the entire road, right-of-way is clear. On number two, I'd like to give a point to ponder. How much does it cost to demolish or remove a bridge that's never been built? Well, that's what we have here. Unlike past bridge projects in Port Angeles, there is no bridge to tear down and remove, which means there's no bridge to dismantle, demolish, cart off, and dispose of. Saving those costs right there. But what's in its place? Temper. And on number three, the site prep pays for itself practically. The right-of-way over White Creek will need to be logged and cleared. The money from the sale of the temper could well pay for at least one of the following: surveying, road stability test, engineering of the bridge, and maybe some grading. Those are the cost benefits of the project. As far as the cost and construction of the bridge, I'll leave that to the city engineers to determine.
Thirty seconds left.
The eastern subdivisions of the city have needed a secondary approach for a long time. Every time there's a finger-bitter or police action, the existing 101 route is shut down, affecting traffic in the rest of the city. The city has had this planned for over six decades, and we are now experiencing a private sector boom, building boom. It's only fitting that the city should keep up with this future growth. Since tonight's meeting is a public hearing on the Capital Facilities Plan and Transportation Improvement Plan, I do hope that this will become part of tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, Christopher Thompson.
We get two of us, so Christopher's with me. Mayor Brook and City Council. My name is Jim Hagwood. I'm the current president of the Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce. And Christopher Thompson is the vice president of the Chamber of Commerce. And we'd like to provide a couple of comments and some recommendations on the CFP. So my part is I'm going to provide you a little background on how we got to where we are today. And Christopher's going to hand out a letter for all of the council members. In 2016, the Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce began a transition away from a tourism, Port Angeles marketing organization to more of a business and community development organization. And we've been undertaking this path since then. In 2017, the organization developed a five-year strategic plan that had some very clear core values and guiding principles that we have been sticking to over the past couple of years. First of all, was to provide community leadership and have a positive influence on the community, be strategic, and take action and measure our progress, be a champion for the business and the community. And lastly, was to help build collaborations around certain projects or certain interests with partners leading to the community vision. So we've been guiding ourselves by those over the last couple of years. Beginning this year, in 2019, the organization launched a, what is called, the Future and Emerging Opportunities Committee. And its job was to look forward and to be proactive and not reactive. And we looked at over a dozen topics that were being considered by the community since the beginning of the year. And that committee is a very inclusive group in that it exists of current board members, of former mayor Karen Rogers, Kristin Halberg of Vaneer Construction, council member French joins us, Chris Fidler, Christopher Thompson, Linty Hopai, and Edna Peterson were on the committee. But we also reached out to other experts and knowledgeable people in the community regarding sort of our research and analysis of certain topics. But the CFP rose to the top in our recommendation that you'll see in the letter and Christopher's going to speak to.
Thirty seconds.
Because of the trend that is happening in downtown Port Angeles. And I'm going to turn it over to Christopher so he gets three minutes to do, right? Go ahead, Christopher.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Brook and City Council. In addition to what Jim Hagwood has noted about the direction and purpose of the Port Angeles City Council, I am here to state that the chamber and its board, as recommended by its Emerging Future Opportunities Committee, has adopted an official opinion and position directly related to the 2020-2025 City of Port Angeles Capital Facilities Plan, or CFP. And I respectfully ask that you consider the following recommended actions. Number one, designate Phase Three of the waterfront development project noted as TRO 113 as active. Number two, designate Railroad Avenue noted in TR 0818 as a transportation arterial. Number three, explore partnerships for city pier maintenance and management with the Port of Port Angeles or another maritime entity. Further is our opinion and recommendation that some of the CFP projects currently with a lower priority status, like the city pier, the Faro Marine Building, Railroad Avenue, et cetera, or projects that are in line for immediate but minor repairs, should be part of a more comprehensive and complete plan like TRO 113. Our opinion is that many of these vitally important projects of the CFP can and will benefit from the efficiencies of combined efforts during the planning, financing, and implementation phases. And as the trusted and representative voice of the Port Angeles business community, the Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce can and will act as the convener for any and all stakeholders that will be affected by the benefit from an active and reprioritized project like TRO 113 and others. As a convener, for example, let's say that one of the currently planned downtown projects, like the Lower Elba Track Hotel, the Waterfront Center, or the Dubar Apartment Project was required to conduct a traffic study as part of a requirement for the permitting process. The Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce would then invite and bring together all of the business stakeholders planning significant investments in the downtown area that might be required to conduct a traffic study of their own. In this way, the chamber provides a venue and a mechanism that would allow all parties to openly discuss concerns, explore ways to combine efforts, and possibly even share costs.
Thirty seconds.
This way, such a study might be more comprehensive in its scope, more meaningful to all parties involved, and provide greater efficiencies, insight, and vision for how we approach the development and even the redevelopment of our beloved downtown Port Angeles. In closing, and on behalf of the Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce and its board, I respectfully request the Port Angeles City Council to acknowledge and take our opinions and recommendations into serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mace, Grantz?
All right, so I'm also representing South Central Port Angeles. As capital projects and transportation are examined, I wanted to bring to attention the pedestrian needs along Race and Mount Angeles Street, especially at the intersections of Porter, or excuse me, the intersections of Craig, Olympus, and Grand. And on top of looking at Race and Mount Angeles Streets, Porter, which is the parallel street there, is also a pedestrian thoroughway. There are currently no or very limited shoulders and no sidewalks south of the Olympic National Park pathway that was referenced earlier. However, on both Porter and Race/Mount Angeles, there's heavy pedestrian traffic, including families with young children, college students, what looks like individuals going to or coming from work at perhaps some daycare homes just north of there, and unaccompanied schoolchildren. All of these individuals are contending with trucks, RVs, and cars for road space. So it's a dangerous situation. My greatest fear in living in that area is that one of my children or one of our community's children will be injured or worse while traveling that corridor, either of those corridors. Furthermore, with the new developments that are occurring on Campbell Street, density is increasing. density is increasing, and so I believe pedestrian traffic will be increasing as well. So I'm just here to ask that this becomes a priority as we look at how we're developing Race Street and what it looks like past that intersection with Lordson to the, I guess, southernmost city limit on Mount Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's everybody on our list. Is there anybody else who would like to address the CFP?
Of course I do. Marley Smith? Okay. Hi, Rip. I have a little plan. The internet isn't discussed very well. It's not given enough weight. You have very low internet standards for personal use, but nothing for commercial, which should be called enterprise or industrial. This is hardly considered an investment in modernization, which is also mentioned somewhere in that plan. Without commercial internet, we cannot compete in today's world. We can't compete in tomorrow's world. We missed the boat 10 years ago when we gave away our only fiber optic connections to one ISP that was then sold to a private company. Let's not do it again. There's been no thought put into it at all, and I find that's a real problem when it comes to economic growth in this area. The next thing I have a huge problem with is the fact that you keep beating the dead dog that the airport's an asset. The Essential Air Services Program was cut in 2012, the FAA Modernization Act.
Marley? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you're talking about the comprehensive plan, and this is for the CFP.
Okay, fine. I won't go to the, I don't have time to stay for the next thing. Sorry. Anyway, the other thing that I really have is there's no, we don't talk about air pollution that's going to be generated by the mill that's going to be coming to Port Angeles. I find that to be, there's no impact statements, there's no concept, there's no standards on what it's going to be, and we're doing a lot of building in town, but nobody's talking about what it's going to smell like and what kind of standards we're going to expect. I think this is going to be a real problem. And by the way, in the future, can we copy these things so that all the pages are in the same direction? Because I know it's killed myself today trying to flip it back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else who would like to address the CFP and the TIP?
My name is Beth Witters. I'm resident of Port Angeles, a business owner downtown, and vice president of the Downtown Association. And I just wanted to let the City Council know that Port Angeles Downtown Association is supportive of the efforts in the long-term comprehensive and strategic and capital facilities plans. The Downtown Association is willing partner, and would like to be involved in the scope of the planning of the projects for downtown. We'd like you to contact us, and we'd like to be involved in the meetings and conversations forthcoming, specifically for the project GG0219, the Downtown Improvement Plan, and the TR-0113, Waterfront Redevelopment Plan. And we look forward to continuing as a partner with the city in the growth and development of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering. I'm sure we'll, that will come. Anybody else who would like to join and speak about the CFP? All right. So seeing none, we will continue this to the June 18 meeting for the City Council. So with that, we are going to move to the second public hearing, which is the 2019 Amendments to the Comprehensive Plan.
If we don't have any concessions about those public comments, or is that?
We can have discussion about that. I know that one of the things that if, I guess we can talk about it. I guess it was responding, giving us a chance to have some time to think about it as well. But so we feel free to make a comment if you want to. Please go ahead.
I just want to take seriously the Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce's comment, and I think that does deserve discussion from the House level.
Yeah, in our work session, we had quite a bit of comment. I think it was mostly around the Downtown Improvement Plan, which is GG0219, as just referenced. And I think we, as a council, kind of wanted it to be more than what it is proposed. Be back. Obviously, that more means more money. What the Chamber just suggested is very similar to what I think we were thinking of. So I would like to see collaboration between the Chamber, the Downtown Association, and the city figuring out how to capitalize on momentum and catalyze downtown's overall comprehensive plan.
And I think I would add that, you know, the downtown, especially the waterfront redevelopment, we had a plan at some point, that it was before I was on council, and things changed. And so my concern is if we don't continue that planning process, if we don't, you know, one of the things that staff has been very good at is strategizing funding. Because we have numerous challenges when it comes to funding sources, and as we saw, grants are a huge amount of this funding. If we're not starting that process, then, you know, downtown is going to develop, and we're not going to develop our parts, right? As a city, we're not going to be doing our part in that overall picture of the development process as these private and nonprofits do their own sites. And so having that comprehensive view, especially with the waterfront, I think we have to start now. And that's going to start with strategizing how that funding is going to come about. And then, you know, as we get farther along that path, it's also going to be what does the waterfront redevelopment mean now? Because it probably doesn't mean the same thing that the official plan meant however many years ago that it was proposed. And, you know, we've already gone through Phases One and Two, and those were, I think, were pretty successful. And I think staff did a good job. I know this was before my time, but they did, it seemed a really good job with those funding strategies. But my concern is, you know, if we're not moving this into, I don't know if active is the place to be. I think it is. That's what our Chamber wants. But if we're not doing that, then we're not starting that funding strategy process, we're not starting that, you know, big picture comprehensive plan process. Not comprehensive plan, it's the next public hearing, but that comprehensive planning process of what is our waterfront redevelopment going to be?
And just to chime in on that, I know that having, I came in at the tail end of the very first phase and then through the second phase, and it takes a long time to get that strategy, to get the money, to get everything in place. And so I do agree that, you know, let's start thinking about the game, the whole process of that. So and I think my estimate is that staff has the whole planning place. It's just, we've also had a couple of turmoils happen here in the city with changes of staff and things like that. So I think we're moving in that direction. Any other comments?
Yes, to add to that, we, when we started out with the downtown redevelopment project, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, I mean, it was all there, the whole comprehensive planning into the future. But we did as much as we could with the funding we had. And although the plan is in place, the funding at this point is not in place. So that's what we're working on. But there is a grand plan to finish out the waterfront redevelopment project. We just need funding resources, and we need mill that's up and running again, and we need staff that's in place. And but it's, there is a plan for more redevelopment, but we are looking for that.
All right. Any other comments?
Just in response to the mayor and councilmember Kid, we have members of the community who are knocking on our door saying, let us help you. And why don't we open the door?
I agree. Let's open that door. I totally agree. Go ahead.
Well, I just wonder, you know, is this something that we should direct staff on? At that point?
I guess it's a public hearing, and so we can, you know, I guess the question you write is to, when do we decide what we direct staff to do? Is that what you're asking?
Or engage staff? I don't know. I mean, I just know that if we do nothing today, then there's a two-week period where we can't meet an act in private, you know, with certain, you know, exceptions. And then there's going to be a public hearing, two weeks from today, where it's basically going to be too late to make changes to this document.
Right.
So this is the day where we need to make changes to this document. And the Chamber of Commerce has asked us to designate the waterfront redevelopment as active. I understand that there are, it's not as simple as that changing it to active status doesn't give you any more pressure, you know, next year or anything like that. There's going to be significant challenges. There's going to be significant funding issues. There's budget impacts. But, you know, I think that that's a good recommendation, and I think that we should consider it and perhaps do it.
So clarification, what does active status mean in this context?
Well, and that's part of the thing that I'm wrestling with, because I understand that, you know, we can't call it funded, right?
And it's on the plan. So it is on the plan. So it is, so the fact that it's on the plan, it means that it is being looked at. The fact that there's no funding is that we haven't found funding in the budget. So in our budget discussions is when we need to start putting money to this plan to make it active, because it's not active unless we have some money behind it.
And I guess my other issue is, I don't know.
Well, Mr. West isn't here. And he's, he, 12 years ago, we started this discussion, and he is very familiar, and he's not here for us to ask our inquiries, nor his Allison. So we really need to defer this till we can discuss it with Mr. West. There's a lot of unanswered questions we have, and he has the answers to.
So as a procedural thing, can we ask staff to look at what this would come back with some recommendations for what it would look like if we incorporated these recommendations? Or something along those lines? That's my very early formulation of maybe a.
I think the other thing that I've pointed out about this letter is what we're really trying to see is a comprehensive view. Because, you know, we have this one project in here called Waterfront Redevelopment that has an $8 million price tag. That's not necessarily, that's, you know, like we said, we did have that plan. That's not necessarily what we're going to end up with, and that plan can morph. And there's multiple other projects that are related in our capital facilities plan, most of which are, again, unfunded, such as Railroad Avenue redevelopment, the TR-0818. We had the City Pier. We had two items with regard to the City Pier. And so I think that we're still in this space where we have these three or four projects that really are one project. And we need to decide what that project is, what the scope is, and how it's going to be forward, and say that it's a priority.
Can I ask a point of order? A plan, maybe not a point of order, procedural question. Do we need to, can we, is there a timeframe around which we need to move to the second public hearing? And if so, could we put this under other considerations to continue the conversation around it? Is there a way to do that? Or is it fine for us to just keep this conversation going and start the next public hearing when we're done?
Yes. Go ahead and finish this. Let's finish this one before we move on to the next one.
Well, the specific question is, when does the state require us to have a CFP group?
We have to have that to the state by the 30th of June.
So we have this meeting and another meeting. I'd like to move to request from staff at our next City Council meeting a somewhat more detailed presentation specifically covering the waterfront redevelopment project, TR-0113, the Railroad Avenue arterial, TR-0818, the Downtown Improvement Plan, GG0219, and any City Pier projects deemed relevant as well, to provide council and the public better understanding of these projects and their imperfections.
Thank you.
All right. So we're asking for more information on these things and how that we can incorporate this. Any further discussion on these items?
I think that that's a good next step, because if we don't take the time to address the things that are brought up in the public hearing, then the public hearing doesn't seem very valuable. And because this is clearly a very well-fought-out, large group of people have, or a group of people have said, who are very clearly impacted by this particular issue, seems very reasonable to ask staff to move forward as the motion states.
So are we not leaving out the sidewalks that have been requested as well?
Oh, yeah.
I agree with Deputy Mayor Dexter that this, do these folks to come to us, voice their concerns? It feels like it's just lip service if we don't do anything to address their concerns. Otherwise, they're coming to us every single time, and we don't do anything about it until the next time this comes up, the next time this comes up. And then the same thing seemed to come back to us, and it still seems to be in the same spot that it was before. And, you know, the sidewalks, walkability. There are a lot of people walking down Mount Angeles Road. That is one skinny piece of roadway when you're on it.
And I do know that we do, we had mentioned that as comments come to us that at the next meeting, there would be an address from cap from staff, kind of coming back about those questions. So we are planning on having staff reply to the comments that have been made here today. So, I mean, your motion speaks, we'll speak to that as well and to see how we can incorporate these.
Yeah, the motion is really just about the downtown. I think with the sidewalks, it's a larger issue. As a city, we are still in the nascent stages of tracking our non-traffic, I guess, or non-vehicle transportation infrastructure. So that's something that we need to do a much better job at. I think adopting the Complete Streets Ordinance is a good first step. I think we still need to infiltrate that Complete Streets ethos into how we operate as a city. And we need to take the pedestrian and other non-motorized vehicle transportation infrastructure as seriously as we take the street for the car. That is, you know, it's not in the Capital Facilities Plan. And if it's not in the plan, it's not going to happen. That's the first step. Nothing that's, I mean, is that fair to say? It's not in the plan, it's not going to happen. So that's a larger issue for us as a city to begin to do a better job of saying, how are we taking care of pedestrian needs? And I appreciate the advocacy from folks in the now-recognized South Central of Port Angeles. You know, so that one, to me, is a little bit beyond the Capital Facilities Plan and what we're recruiting today, just because it's not even in there as a project. It's something that, you know, in other areas, staff will be doing a really good job at separating items out and being able to do that long-term master plan. And that's essential, because without good information, we're not going to be able to make good decisions, just to quote someone else on our city staff. And but I think we're a little bit further off into pedestrian stuff. That doesn't mean I don't think it's as important as how we're looking at downtown, but it's something that I don't think we're going to solve in June. And then with the Lordson Street Bridge over, what would that be?
Point three.
Thanks. I don't think that's in the Capital Facilities Plan. That, to me, is a larger conversation about how do we have an alternative route across Port Angeles? It's something that we, as a council, discussed several times over the last couple of years. It is vague in the comprehensive plan. And to me, it has to be a comprehensive plan laid out. Let's actually map it and say, this is the vision for how people travel east-west through Port Angeles in various transportation modalities. And then once we have it at that level, then we would think about it in the Capital Facilities Plan model. So that is something that, to my knowledge, is not in the plan at this point. It might not be part of the plan. But you're certainly right, that it's there as an obvious suggestion and right of ways.
Isn't Race Street part of our sidewalk? It's Section Five.
Race Street is part of the Complete Streets.
Yeah. Because the second part, why I was speaking to the idea of Lordson upbridge over White Creek on Lordson.
No, let's not have conversations with the lobby.
So. So...
As I remember, when we were going through our orientation, Serena, on this, we talked briefly about the waterfront and the pier, and the need for, shall we say, repairs? And the, the consideration was, do we repair it, or do we wait for the, for the entire project to take place? And I, I agree with you, and certainly the chamber, that, that this project needs, needs to be moved forward, especially in light of the fact that if we defer the maintenance on the pier, and we're also going to wind up deferring the, this project, and it, just the way it, it works. And so I would agree with you that we, we need to move this to an active status, and then when we start budget considerations, talking, you know, see if we can find a way to, to fund this project, at least get it going, in the sense that we can look at things that need maintenance right away, and then maybe start with our planning process for the overall program by addressing those. But instead of just, you know, putting a Band-Aid on something now, and then coming back years from now and trying it again, I think it's time that we, we understand that this whole, whole area really needs to be looked at. Railroad Avenue, as you know, is, is got, is built on pylons. And, and, you know, this crease open and all that other stuff that goes along with it, and so, but I would also agree that since we have all this development going down, this plan probably needs to be dragged out, dusted off, and looked at again, because when this first, when this plan first came into being, it wasn't planned for hotel, it wasn't a plan for waterfront center. And so the projects that were completed, Phase One and Phase Two, have to be happily coincide with, with what was planned down there. But Phase Three, I think, needs to be looked at in light of, of what developments have come, you know, to fruition since then. So I'm making a long story out of this, but what I'm trying to say is basically, let's take this plan out, dust it off, and update it, and then look at what priorities we need to start with, rather than, but may perhaps what the plan is, is, is laid out to be. I know there was an area about, a concern about parking and so forth, and, and that may or may not be a, a consideration now. So anyway, just my thoughts on that.
So I just to clarify for staff, because I know that the title "Active" in the CFP is not used, it's either funded or unfunded. And so that's one of the things that we'll need some clarification for. I know that as to the designation of Railroad Avenue as a arterial, I mean, there's going to be things that you, you have to have a traffic study to figure out how, you know, what the traffic is, you're going to need to get some different, whether it meets the criteria of a arterial, so this would be stuff that staff would have to take a look at as well. And then, so we, we need to, I guess the instructions we've given to staff with this motion that you're setting, would hopefully clarify how we could, I guess, amend the CFP, is what we're looking for. Is that correct?
I'm looking for more detailed information on those particular projects. I know from just conversation with Manager West, that there are a number of complications, some of them mentioned here, another one being the border logistics, and whether those are going to be located here or in Canada. So there's lots of factors right now that I think are worth discussing publicly, so that we can all have a better understanding of the council, and the staff, and the public about how this part of town is, is likely to move. We have a number of plans here, they don't have that much information, with the CFP document itself, which is a lot more information that would be valuable, and that's why I made that motion.
So can we vote on this motion?
I can, I can speak to the motion.
Okay.
To be fair, I have the very patient.
Go ahead and speak to the motion.
Thank you. So I would like to thank Lindsay for making this motion, because I think it clarified a lot of my intent about moving forward on this recreation for the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for their leadership. It's been a privilege to be in the committee with a lot of these really intelligent people talking about the future of Port Angeles. Also, I'd really recognize Sherri Kidd's point about the previous planning that was done in Phase One and Phase Two. You know, that was done at a time where there wasn't a lot of development happening in downtown. That was a time where, you know, and, and while that happened, we did do some comprehensive planning around how, you know, what was Blackwell going to do with their dock, they did reservations around the same time. So there was a lot of good coordination with that. And I think without those Phase One and Phase Two, we might not be talking today about private developments happening in downtown. So I would like to recognize that was, that's a very good point. I do think that, as Jen said, that Phase Three is kind of, I think we have a plan here that's presented to us, that still doesn't know what's going to happen with some of these projects. And so that's where I want to find that clarity. What are we really saying we're going to do to the pier? Are we saying we're going to repair it? Are we saying we're going to redevelop completely? Are we, what are we going to do with Railroad Avenue? And how is that going to fit in that comprehensive plan for downtown? And let's make that a priority. So I support this motion, and I really would thank the, you know, the chamber for providing us to have this discussion.
Just one quick little bit of information. So when we did our planning for the downtown waterfront redevelopment transportation project, Phase One and Phase Two were meant to be a catalyst for developing downtown. We did it with the future vision of if we can create, take away our dumpy waterfront, create a beautiful waterfront, it would be a catalyst for development, and it has exceeded beyond our expectations. But also, the Phase Three, like any document and plan that we have, everything's a living document. That's what's good about us.
All right. So we have a motion on the table in a second. Any further discussion of the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody know? It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Now we can move to the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
While Ben is sitting, he's already said that.
Ben's going to do a presentation on the specific amendments that we have before you tonight. I want to give both the council and the audience some background on the Growth Management Act, comprehensive plan, and what it, what it means when we're talking about that. In 1990, the Washington State Legislature enacted the State Growth Management Act, which we call GMA for short, which requires all cities and counties subject to the Act to develop and adopt comprehensive plans and implementing ordinances that will regulate and guide future growth and development in communities, both cities and counties. The comprehensive plan is the policy foundation for the city. It sets fundamental goals and policies that are the basis for action items. The city's budget, capital facilities plan, which you just heard in public hearing, the work plan, departments, transportation plan, and departmental performance standards are also based on and consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. Port Angeles comprehensive plan has been developed and periodically updated, meet the requirements of the GMA, is consistent with the Clalton County, countywide planning policies. And to take it back in history a ways, the city of Port Angeles has been performing comprehensive planning since the 1960s in response to the Planning Enabling Act of 1959. The first comprehensive plan under the GMA was enacted in 1995, was updated in 2004, and again in 2016. Those updates are now required by the state every eight years, so we're meeting that requirement in 2016. This is an amendment to that 2016 update. The amendment was due, to the function of the amendment process, as we call it, annual review, which the city has done periodically, 1995 through 2010, every year, and then in 2016 and 2017. Our next update will be in 2024. With that, I'll hand it over to Ben to talk about what was the conference in this amendment.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. This presentation's going to look a lot like the last one we had, but for the, for the purpose of having a public hearing, and also for some council members, I'm going to put that there. Go through it here. So here, remember, about almost a year ago, in date, on June 5th, this council made a resolution to declare that this plan met GMA. But we did not go through with the entire amendment process with the intent that we were going to have the planning commission review again, and go through this process with the 2019, and that's where we are now. On September 12th, we had a joint meeting with the commission and council to discuss the comprehensive plan. And on September 18th, there was five motions made for the action, basically, directing the planning commission to go through with the 2019 amendment. On October 10th, the planning commission kicked off that amendment process. They started with looking at the, some definitions of the goal, policy, and objective, and then they went through developing methodology for their review, and a typology for looking at their, looking at the policies, and also for their, all of the editing that they're going to do. And as a part of that, they basically went through every single word and line in the plan, at least the chapters two through 11, all of the amendments. April 15th, staff presented our preliminary document to the Washington State Department of Commerce. It was our 60-day notice with intent to adopt. And on April 24th, the planning commission held a public hearing, which they continued to their May 8th, their May 8th hearing, and they made a recommendation to adopt the plan. So I wanted to take you back to the motions that you all made as a, as a council to planning commission, and just go over how they responded. The first motion was to request the planning commission to assess the comprehensive plan and amendment to address internal inconsistencies. The second motion was to recommend the planning commission evaluate the land use map for the match compatibility with the vision, goals, policies, and objectives stated in the plan. The third motion was to move to request the planning commission to recommend amendments to the comprehensive plan based on elimination of redundancies, vagueness, and ambiguity. The fifth motion was to ask the planning commission to evaluate the definition of policy and make a recommendation regarding that definition in the comprehensive plan and the amendment. And the fifth motion was to recommend the planning commission begin work on the amendment drafting process immediately. And so I, I will say, we looked at all of these motions very carefully, and the only motion that they, as a group, decided to not follow through with was the land use map. Just recognizing the amount of work, this is, the decision was made on February 22nd, the meeting, knowing that the work that they had already done, they, they just could not really follow through, they wanted more public input for the land use map itself. So they recommended that we look at that at a future amendment or at future update. So with that, at their May 8th meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of the 2019 annual comprehensive plan amendment, application number 1932, to the city council, citing recommended changes listed in appendices A and D, appendix E recommendations, and the three conclusions in support of that action listed in the staff report. And just for your information, appendices A and D, the appendix A of their staff report was all of the 2019 track changes that they had. Appendix D was all of the 2018 changes that they had made. And appendix E was the 2019 typology, so looking at how we removed policies or moved policies, and we assigned different typologies to that, and those recommendations were rolled in as a part of that decision. Lastly, we'll see that we have, we have four amendments that were, that the planning commission is recommending. The first three are actually a part of the 2000 amendment process that we went through, and the last is the, the amendments that we've done this year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the council, with the recommendation that we open the public hearing and continue to, June 18th.
Thank you. So one, my gratitude to the planning staff and to the planning commission for the hard work that they went through, so, so thank you. So, council, we do have, is there any questions regarding this comprehensive plan? And if none, then I'm going to open up the public hearing, and I'm going to read the ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting a new amended comprehensive plan. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on the comprehensive plan, please step up. Marley, did you want to?
Sure. Okay. Marley Smith, again, I'll pitch you about the internet, because that's not really covered at all. The airport, I'm finding to be an odd thing that keeps popping back up, especially since Payne Field just went into commercial operation. And according to the FAA, essential air service is only considered now if there's more than 100,000 passengers, or if there's, if it's further away than, more than 75 miles from the closest airport that's going to be doing 100,000 passengers. So we're kind of out of the running, because Payne Field is 75 miles away from us. So that keeps coming up, and it's like, you know why? We kind of lost out along with a lot of other rural airports in the country. The other thing is the internet we aren't talking about, and that's, we are the most, the perfect area for, for software companies to come, for individuals to come. And currently, all we have is WAVE, and they shut off fiber optic to everybody, except, you know, customers that have always had it. We don't have anything in our plans about how to get around the fact that we block fiber optic for everyone out West. No one out West can get fiber optic, because we gave away our fiber optic to one ISP, and that one ISP was somehow allowed, even though it had first right of refusal, was allowed to sell it to WAVE. WAVE does not provide internet or enterprise software for any, or internet for anyone. They just don't want to do it, because it's not in their best interest, it's not part of their business plan. So I know that Derringer now is looking for ways that people can invest and get some IRS tax credits. I can't actually read the bill, because it still isn't posted, but we have an opportunity again to address this. We really need to look at that, because that's going to be, I mean, right now, we're on the cow path to the information highway again. So, you know, I wish that would be something that would be included in here, and would be looked at a lot more seriously, and also be looked at in terms of what our representatives are doing to try to help us. Thank you.
And I guess to clarify also, this is just taking the old one and cleaning it up, so it is not a true amendment proceeding. So just so you know, that that's the purpose of what we, we had to start somewhere, and so we've got to clean it up, and now...
But we're 10 years old, and what we're saying, that you want a class of service for, for individual people, not for enterprise, and that's a huge mistake. I mean, let's go back 25 years.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else who would like to address council on the comprehensive plan amendments? All right. Seeing none, I know I have a bunch of comments, but does anybody else have comments to make on this?
I just have a question about the performance measure metrics for each state department, and where are those in active plan?
I apologize. It's the implementation section. Is that it? Yeah. It's the implementation section.
There's the implementation section, which is in CHAP, which is element 11. So I mean, so the performance matrix, performance for departments, that is something you've already approved, so there were no changes to that.
When did we approve that?
Last year.
Yes. So when, when we said that the plan was okay to go, that met the GMA at that point?
So those are the existing metrics, not the post-metrics that had been changed?
Yeah. Yeah, right.
So, so, one, if you guys can fix that transportation analysis section, that is almost illegible, it's like very kind of graphical, pixelated.
I can, I can speak to that if you'd like. We, some of the pages are in the Adobe product, they didn't update correctly, and so those are actually like mirrored images that don't have any information behind them, so it looks very pixelated. You'll notice the pictures are the same way, all of the images, and we're working with our previous consultants to get those back so that we can put them in the document.
Okay, because yeah, that was, I, that gave up already, that part. And so just, then, goal G6B and goal G6C are exactly identical. I think that there's, yeah, type over there. And then on reading, goal G8B, I think there's something wrong. It's like it's missing a word, it's not flowing right for some reason. And I know that, I guess it's, the matrix, I know, as it, as it exists, is incomplete. You know, there's that last column that says whether it's complete or not, and there's a lot of them are empty. Some of them say ongoing, which makes sense, but they aren't going to be ongoing, but even if it stalled, it'd be better to say stalled, or stopped, or completed. But when you have nothing, and there's no idea what the status is, we could go to, to at least fill that in.
I mean, doesn't that just mean incomplete?
No, I don't think so, because some of them are even dated as a completed date in 2017. And I know it's some of these old things, and they didn't want to change what we had, which is the reason, I mean, I am grateful that it reads so much better, but it wasn't, they didn't, they didn't do an update, they did an amendment, and so that was, that was the difference.
So, we'll have to wait.
No, actually, we don't. We do know that you guys can have an update anytime, anytime.
Just not right now.
Just so you know.
Just not this month.
Not this month. But I am forever grateful, and this is the first thing that I wanted eight years ago, and so it's finally done, and I appreciate it. So...
So I actually do, we're not, we're doing another public hearing on this, so we're not for the audience.
Correct.
That's all right. Now, I just want to mention that any type of graphical errors or anything, please bring them up, because we did a lot of work, and sometimes the, you know, change, making so many changes, you miss, you miss some, so I'm fine with...
Do you want us to email them?
Yeah, definitely. I really appreciate that.
Nothing major, there was a couple.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, so then we will continue this to the June 18th meeting. It's 8:00 AM, 7:30. You guys want to go, or want to continue on? Anything want? Okay. So we will move on to a consideration of the schedule for the future think tanks. And I guess I've been thinking about this one, so here's, here's my thoughts on that. So one, I guess, so the scheduling of the think tank will happen between Ethan and I once a month. So wherever it fits best in the agenda, we'll do it once a month to ensure that it gets covered. So I guess...
Meaning we do it on either of the two council meetings?
Correct.
Rather than right now, we kind of have a set deadline.
Right, and it kind of forces things at, well, now we have too much on this one, and oh gosh, now we're going to be really late. But someone from the previous council, many councils have all said, we used to have meetings that used to go until 1:00 in the morning, so we should be actually very happy that you don't have...
I just want that, just to be clear.
That was the, that was the default.
So, so be glad that we're not staying up there. So we will, that's it. So Nathan and I will make sure that we get it scheduled once a month.
We need a motion to make that change to the agenda.
No. The mayor and the city manager already have authority to put items on the agenda.
Okay.
I, I'd like to make a just suggestion, if you will. Why not put the think tank before the meeting? In other words, just in case we don't have an executive session, for example, we had, a couple weeks ago, we had the discussion on toilets. It gives us a predictable amount of time, it gives us a predictable format, if you will, for the think tank, and therefore, we're not trying to squeeze it in someplace, because, as you know, the meetings tend to be a little bit unpredictable when it comes to conversations, and so, you know, I'm not trying to elongate the meeting or start meeting sooner, but it occurs to me that if we put the think tank first, before the meeting starts, in lieu of an executive session, perhaps, we, we then have a finite amount of time, granted, but on the other hand, we have a predictability in the sense that, okay, we're going to try to squeeze this in, and it's 9:30, everybody's sitting there going, oh, think tank, I forgot about that. So, I think you get a little bit more robust conversation, we're all fresh, and, you know, so thinking a little bit outside the box, why, why put it in the meeting, why not put it before the meeting? We're not, you know, we, we didn't want to have a separate date for it, but on the other hand, why do we have to have it in the meeting? Why not just put it before the meeting? And in lieu of, because we, we've had executive sessions, when I schedule a council meeting, I schedule it at 5:00 o'clock now every, instead of 6:00, so just a, just a thought.
It's a great thought, if we don't have executive sessions, so we'll...
I didn't know what to get myself today.
No, I showed up in the parking lot, and it was vacant, I didn't like it.
So, any other suggestions?
I want that.
Okay.
I would just say as much as possible, and if we know of particular items, just that we want to have a discussion about, we should be as specific as possible before the agenda comes out, I think that's better for this, or for anyone reading the agenda. You know, and I do really encourage the idea of these open discussions, that Mayor Dexter and I were just in the strategic planning meeting that the, that Calom Transit had last Friday, and one of the things that came up was making sure that there's time for open discussion on that board, and that that's an important thing for, for coming together as a group and understanding our collective vision. So I want to encourage that, if you'd like.
And so I do want to bring up the thing about topics and scheduling, and I will take the complete blame for not getting my act together early enough to make sure that it gets into the agenda. So I will have the topics done, and if you have a topic you want to discuss, lucky now. If not, I will go by the priorities that we had already selected, and just in case, in case other topics come up, but that's what I'll do. So I will, and actually, I will begin putting a list together, and then we'll start crossing them off, so we have some predictability of what's coming up next as well. The one reminder I have is for the public and for the press, is that it is a think tank. I know sometimes things that we've said sometimes get taken out of context. It is a think tank, no bad idea is, no, no idea is a bad idea, just, we are just, this is the only place we have to express or to even throw out ideas, so, yes.
Again, another advocate for, for having it before the meeting, and there's no misunderstanding that it, that it was part of the meeting, or part of the agenda, or something that was said during, in the think tank, if it is, was included during a meeting agenda, then again, it may be misconstrued as part of the agenda. So again, that's another reason I think that having it before the meeting would mitigate the potential for that part, anyway.
So just as a quick thing, I know, like I said, we've had a lot of executive sessions because, for X and Y reasons, but if we started at four, has that become an issue? Okay, so five is the earliest that we can start, right?
And it's not, it's also not around about a half an hour if we only have one topic. I think that's a problem.
All right. All right. So that takes care. Are there any other thoughts on the think tank? So we are now on to contracts and purchasing. Complete Streets grant acceptance, Francis Street ADA grant project. Who gets this?
I get this. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are here to present, well, the request and acceptance of the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board Complete Streets grant in the amount of $300,000. Back in December 2018, we had requested adoption of Complete Streets ordinance, and it was kind of a rush request because we had to meet the TID deadline of 14th of December. Now, we look back with what we have done with that, following the adoption of the ordinance, future wise, not needed to the city for the award, for the Washington TID Complete Streets award grant, and the TID did approve $300,000 to improve the ADA curb ramps on Francis Street. So today, we are here to request that the council accepts the TID grant of $300,000 and gives us, give us a go ahead to accelerate Project TR-0616 from 2022 to 2021, so we can use this and disperse the amount of $300,000, which is at deadline 31st of March 2022. Thank you.
Great. Questions?
I, I move also.
Sure. I move to accept the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board Complete Streets grant in the amount of $300,000, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for the grant.
Second.
Now that I've made the motion, I would like to share with the public that no matching funds from the city are required, zero. I mean, this is so unusual. Outstanding job. So this is going to create a high priority for ADA accessibility to the Olympic Medical Center, a children's park, YMCA, Olympic Discovery Trail, is in the currency of the yen, will instill approximately 41 ADA compliant curb ramps on Francis Street between Caroline 8th Street. Rob, do you have a copy of this? I want, this is great, we need, people need to know, so I'm just real pleased. Thank you, staff, this is awesome.
Thank you.
All right.
I would just like to say, this is an example of how we have to get creative when we're talking about sidewalks and these street improvements. It's always very frustrating because we have a capital facility spin, and here are fighting challenges as a city, to hear about our payment index where it is, and so seeing something come forward where we are able to leverage existing funds that the state provides, allows to provide, to make, you know, real important improvements for our citizens is very rewarding, so thank you, staff.
Yes.
I apologize because I can't remember his name right now, but we have had someone who has spoken to us on multiple occasions about this exact access.
Mr. Steve Drake.
Thank you. So he'll be thrilled.
I, I just also want to say that this, this comes about because we passed the Complete Streets ordinance, which made us eligible for transportation improvement board funds, which we had been leaving on the table for years.
So now that we got this wonderful grant, what are, do we have any sense of what the next couple of projects might be that we can nominate to get on there so that we can get funding?
Madam Mayor, at this point, I do not have the answer to that question, but we'll get back to that, consulting with the staff.
Okay, but we have a motion on the table.
Right, so, so I would like, I guess it was one of those things that the safe routes to school and the sidewalks, I thought, were really important.
And this is also an example of, you know, partnerships, because we were nominated for this by Future House, so as we had the Complete Streets ordinance, as was pointed out, another, you know, organization nominated us for this award, and so it's, it's a great collaboration.
All right, any further comments? So we have a motion on the table and a second for the discussion, so all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, thank you. All right. So we are on to council reports. We're going to start with Jim.
Okay, I, I'd like to make a comment on, on council reports, if you, if you wouldn't mind. I don't know if this would be part of the think tank session, or if it's appropriate now, so I'm kind of asking for a little guidance, if you will, but it was pointed out correctly that there is, in, in the council policies and procedures, there really is no guidance as to what council reports are or should be, or how long they even should be allowed to go on. So I, I would like to see a discussion and perhaps a change in, in the council policies and procedures regarding whether we even have council reports. I personally would be in favor of this continuing council, council reports. It seems to me that on occasion, they're used as a pulpit for favorite issues, and I personally don't think that's, that's appropriate, so it, I would like to have a discussion as to whether council reports are even necessary anymore, and if, if they are, I would like to see some guidance in the policies and procedures as to what they cover, or at least how long they should take. And having said that, I'm going to use that as my council report today.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, today is our little task force where we approve new bylaws, which will go to the county, Calum County Commissioners for approval. Our next task will be re, reviewing our tenure plan in homelessness, which has a very aspirational title, but is mostly a document that helps justify the various tax revenue accounts that the state provides. And so, you know, my focus on that task force will be not necessarily in the creation of that plan, but what do we do with it after it's approved by that board? Because it would be really nice, in my mind, for the homelessness task force to make recommendations to the Calum County Board of Commissioners as to what policies should we adopt, what policies are standing in the way of ending homelessness. So I'm encouraged by that task force. I think that we have the ability to do some good work. We'll see if that happens. I also attended, for a very short time, PA United Town Association meeting yesterday, but the reason that I was able to hold the event for a short time was because I had a different board meeting, of which I'm not a council representative, so I'm going to kind of, I hope this is an okay thing to talk about, but I'm, I, in my private life, I'm a board member of the Local Comprehensive Community Plan, formerly GMA. As a result of that, usually I recuse myself from council contract decisions around that. But I will point out that one of the things that we had at our board meeting just last night was that open discussion period as an agenda item, and it was the first time we really had it, and it was an incredibly good conversation, and it got everyone involved, and it really, you know, I think we had a really robust conversation about what our goal as a community plan was. So that was a really great thing. Another thing that ties into that was, you know, we're receiving tonight our police department's annual report. It's a long report, I'm sure most of us have at least skimmed it, I didn't have necessarily time to read it in super detail, but I did skim it, and the, there's a couple pages, and then our police chief emailed us separately to rediscover it, and that's a program that I think we all should be extremely proud of, that has been, I think, extremely beneficial. One of the things that was mentioned in our board meeting last night for OPCC was how many individual contacts were made in our homeless population of Port Angeles, and if you compare that to the point in time count, it's, they're very similar numbers. We contacted a large amount of people, and not all of those were able to direct services, but many really successful outcomes came out of that program. But one thing I will say, as for council to know, is that's a program through OPCC that, you know, wouldn't exist without Chief Brian Smith and Deputy Chief V, and doing really good work on the WASPIT grant to fund it. Grant-funded programs rely on grants, that's a tautology, but that means that if those grants don't happen in the future, those programs are put at great risk. So that's something that should be on our minds. If we think this rediscovered program is a priority, if funding doesn't continue, I don't, I, you know, I am hopeful that it will continue, obviously, because I think it's a priority, but there might need to be a bigger community conversation about how do we pay for it. I also was able to attend the Boys and Girls Club groundbreaking, which was an awesome event. It's, it's a very exciting project. I was able to bring my two kids, and there was a swing set they were playing on, looking super cute, and it was great, and it's awesome to see our community invest in kids and families. The best part was watching all the kids that were served by that Boys and Girls Club with little tiny shovels, going to the dirt pile, digging in, and moving some dirt. with little tiny shovels, going to the dirt pile and digging in and moving some dirt, um, as part of the groundbreaking, and so it's great to see our community make some progress, because right next door to that are a bunch of new houses, and on the other side of that, in the future, will hopefully be a bunch of new houses. And so that was really exciting, that, I'm really glad that I was able to attend and represent the city, and I think that's, um, I, there's other meetings I attended, we've talked about those, because most of those are chamber conference meetings, so we already covered that, thank you. I'm not sure that our council rules of procedure allow the word tautology to be used during council reporting. So I would first like to congratulate all of the city staff who work in the corp yard on their yard of the month award.
What?
And I think that there should also be a nomination for sign of the year, perhaps also due to the corp yard employees. So congratulations, please do pass that on to all of them.
Thank you.
In your good day. Uh, I also attended, along with Councilmember Brand and Director Delcot, the Port Angeles Airport Master Plan of the House. Uh, the airport's considering several different options, um, for their, their future plan, and kind of overall runway length and all of that, for anyone looking at, you know, the future of the airport, I think it's a useful, um, plan to look at, because it really determines what things are gonna land there and let's not. Um, yeah, I think once the airport establishes which of its alternatives it's going to use, uh, then, you know, we should have a serious conversation with the airport about how to make sure that, um, city properties adjacent to the airport are compatible, we, we don't have these incompatible uses, um, basically Lincoln Park right next to the airport. That's something that we need to resolve with a real agreement, and to me that means, you know, actual aviation easement or something, not just kind of contractual, yeah, this is the plan, I want to go forward and that sort of thing. So I do want to make sure that we address that, the first step in that is the airport master plan adopted by the port, and then we can figure out where we need to go from there. Um, I do think the airport continues to be an important asset in our community. Um, one of the most convincing arguments for me is the medevac issue, in that a lot of times when somebody needs to leave the Olympic Medical Center for Seattle hospitals to get more advanced care, um, they cannot leave when they run out of a helicopter, and so the airport becomes, uh, kind of a lifesaving piece of infrastructure. Um, there's some other reasons as well, but, but that's probably, to me, the most convincing reason at this time. I agree that commercial air service doesn't make sense, you know, some people are still, you know, rooting for that, to subsidize that. To, to me, it doesn't make sense when we could be subsidizing things like more frequent bus service to Seattle and that sort of thing. Um, but that was very useful to, to talk with the airport's consultants there at the master plan. I also attended the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Rampa, uh, which was just a webinar, um, talking about what passed, you know, what didn't pass from the legislative session this year for the state, specifically concerning cities' interests. Two things came to mind that I thought we'd mentioned, and prefered to mention today. Um, one is more funding for rediscovery programs, and, and it made me think that we, um, and the Olympic Peninsula Community Plan are ahead of the curve, um, for the rest of the state, and, um, I really hope that we continue in that direction. Um, so thanks to, um, everybody who's been involved in that program, and please do continue that. Uh, the other thing that's, um, that I took away from that was a number of the, um, for housing measures that pass at the state level, one of which is, is time sensitive for us, and that is, uh, House Bill nineteen twenty-three, it is the Urban Residential Building Capacity Bill. And if we implement policies under that bill by April first of twenty twenty-one, there are certain incentives built into the bill, um, for us as a city. So that is something I want to mention to the rest of the council and to staff, and I'll bring it up again when we do strategic planning for our next round, that, um, we want to be looking at those policies out of House Bill nineteen twenty-three and, um, get in that incentive program before November twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I want to start by saying thank you to all of you for, um, excusing me from the last meeting. Um, I was able to attend the Mayor's Conference on Entrepreneurship in Kansas City, Missouri, and, um, it was a very worthwhile use of my time. Just as a point of clarification, it was paid for in one hundred percent by the Kaufman Foundation, which was the sponsor of the event. Um, so it was, um, a double, a double win, um, it just didn't cost us anything. Um, and I took the bus over to Seattle, so, um, I can talk more about that at another time. Um, I also just want to encourage, if anyone wanted, any of you want to join me, um, I am on the group, uh, that is participating in the five-two-one-oh, uh, challenge in July, and it's not too late to, to join me, so consider that. Uh, it's five fruits and vegetables, no more than two hours of recreational screen time, one hour of physical activity, and zero sugary drinks every day, um, for the entire month. So I'm thinking I will rope my kids into it as well, and they're gonna have a really hard time with some parts of that, and it won't be the fruits and vegetables. Um, the last thing, a couple other things I can talk about at another time, but, um, one thing that I just thought was kind of funny, so I want to share it. After the last Farrow board meeting, we, we were meeting, um, in a different location downtown because they have a, a pre-existing event that happens, um, to coincide this time of year at Farrow. And when I got downtown, I parked my car, and there were people trying to catch something, and I wasn't sure what it was, and when I went into the meeting, everyone said, oh, there's a marmot downtown, and people are trying to catch it. So I left the meeting, there were a bunch of people around my car, and I got halfway to my car, and I realized the marmot is under my car. That's what all those people are for. So, um, they happened to be park people, and so they made a couple phone calls, the park biologist came down with the trap, we surrounded the car, and successfully trapped it in a live trap, and it went back up to Hurricane Ridge from whence it came. And everyone said to me, all the park people said, we hit the ridge today. It wasn't me, it was right around somewhere else, because apparently the, the juveniles will climb into people's engine compartments and get a ride down into town, so, um, that was just a little Port Angelesic segment after my meeting.
That needs to be in the vertigo, how many guys do it, Los Angeles, right?
Right.
Rescue.
There's a pool board meeting last Tuesday, and the pool boards fenced off and closed in case anybody missed that memo, and, uh, hopefully they'll start construction soon. And for escaped children, I will make sure they have unobstructed access to sugar air.
Um, I also would like to, in the future, discuss the guidelines and parameters for council, um, reports. Initially, it was so we could, when we had different committee assignments, we could share those with other council members, but it has more clearly into, um, no limitation on time, um, our own mail being read, read to us, philosophical reports, and I think the initial intent, um, has changed, and, and so if there are no guidelines, then I believe we should put them in place so that we all understand the purpose and we can all participate equally in council reports. So I hope we can discuss that in the future. All right, so, um, my council reports are for the Lord's Trust. The Lord's Millie is getting a brand new roof, um, that's where Blue Moon and Fitness was started. Um, I attended the farmer's market, and, um, there was a couple of folks that came up. One said that we needed a working office hours for council. So they wanted to come visit us, so we had no working hours for, um, for them to come. Um, the second one was a developer who had an issue with trying to split a lot in that building, and, um, he said he's, he was pretty frustrated, you could tell. And, uh, so I guess at some point I'll come talk to you guys about that, but, uh, I think the idea was tried to, I guess he wanted to start splitting lots and being able to put houses on there, so that is something that, uh, I know we've talked about densifying, and it's potentially, we have policies that get in the way of that. Um, the third one, um, was a question of what happened to that bladed property that was supposed to be torn down. I, I wasn't sure, so I know at some point if you could give us a follow up on that, that'd be great, but that was a question from one of the folks there. Um, the next item I have is the Mutsu students are going to, in June, to Japan, and they have asked whether, from the council, we would want to give a gift to the mayor over there. So, um, so I don't know, that's something, if you guys have any ideas, um, we will. They're leaving on the twenty-seventh, I believe, so let me know if anything strikes you, and, um, we could, you know, I think we should, as our sister city, and they bring us always a little bit of something, let's see if we can get them something there. Um, then I had a meeting with Randy Johnson from the, uh, he's one of the county commissioners. Um, so we talked about our lodging tax committees, and so the next meeting's gonna happen at the, uh, at their chambers, June thirteenth at two-thirty, in the commissioner's meeting room. And so our lodging tax committee will join them. Then the other thing, he is, uh, gonna be talking sometime in July, we're gonna meet with a couple of developers. He's trying to, um, get some information from the city as to how much it would cost to potentially build an aid flex, and it's pretty complicated to figure out exactly what that means, and so, but, um, he's now got a date in July, so we've got plenty of time to see how we can work to come up with some kind of numbers for him. Um, and then he's gonna do, he told us that he's gonna do a cost analysis on a port building potentially to be used for a nine-one-one or E O C. And so, um, so I told him, you know, he'll learn it's like a cost analysis, but it's gotta be, um, you know, we're gonna figure out about that. The next thing I have is that the next joint action planning meeting is, uh, being arranged by, uh, Fire Chief Dubuque, um, and it's gonna be in the week of June seventeenth, so we have, we don't have a finalized date yet, but that's coming. And, um, then I will be out next week, I will be in D C, and actually, my trouble's getting paid by the N S F, which is nice, so, but I will also be able to do some city business there. Um, I also like to report that the tables and chairs are out at the transit station, and, uh, we've got six of them, we actually have more, we just thought we'd put six out. We had a, we had a baby scare of like, oops, did they go away? But they had been put away, they're still out there, there's cameras on them. But the idea is that we want to have places for people to come sit and eat. So we've got more to deploy, but the question would be something that we might need to figure out how, or when and what, but, um, yeah, I like them. I like them a lot, they're colorful, they're nice.
They look great, I saw one by the other day.
Yeah, and I was, during the farmer's market, they were used continually, and so it was really nice to have them there. And then, uh, and Mike, I want to thank you very much for attending that Boys and Girls Club. I so wanted to go to, but I had other commitments, so that is my report. So we are now on to the information from the city man, from Mr. Bor, Attorney Bor.
There are some reports that are contained in the packet, um, there for your review. I know that somebody already reviewed the report from the police department. Uh, in addition to that, I'd like to note that, uh, Sherry in the meeting office had put on your council calendars, the budget meetings that are starting already, so it's already budgeted by four twenty twenty. And Serena has developed budget calendars, I know those have been put on your calendars, and the first one of those will be at the next council meeting on the eighteenth of this month, uh, well, five o'clock to six o'clock.
Thank you. Um, and I know in one of those reports was the vertical report. Um, the only, you know, I guess as to feedback, if you can let them know that, it'd be nice to be able to read it, because it is not the legal, because text is just too tight in a lot of places. I had to actually pull out the medical files. You get some of that, right?
Concern noted, and we've contacted Vertigo about that area issue.
Thank you so much, I just, okay. So we are at the second public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council at this time?
Mayor Leesman, Port Angeles. Um, regarding the council reports, they're the only way that, as guys in the peanut gallery, you can see your personalities and see what you're interested in and see what things you're advocating for. Um, I think it's really valuable, and I don't even know, sometimes you guys go on a little too long, and sometimes it's irrelevant. It's great, because it's one of the few ways that I can see who you are, what you are, what you stand for, and I can see where your minds, you know, are, what, what you're looking into. So I think that by limiting them or making them just as it used to be, which was just what boards are on, which was always kind of boring, this is way more interesting and more engaging, so thank you for that. Meanwhile, I'd like to ask why, when we're gonna have more town hall meetings? Uh, we were supposed to have a, an update to our opioid meeting that was supposed to be within six to eight months, and it hasn't happened, and I think we need to update that and also talk about the meth issues in our community. Um, I also think we should have more town hall meetings, like at least once every quarter, because it gives the people in the community a chance to actually ask questions and interact more. And then, on a whole different topic, I urge you all to go to fourhfruit.com, because, um, if you buy cases of organic fruit directly from Western Washington, you are helping the four H, um, uh, clubs in Clallan County, in Jefferson County, in Pittsapp County, and they get an equal amount, their money that they get is based on what we buy in our county. So please go to fourhfruit.com and get some cherries and apricots and peaches, and there's really great stuff there. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hello, I'm Amy Miller, Houston City. I would like to just invite everyone to a picnic. Uh, we will be holding picnics every Friday from noon to two at Webster Park. They, uh, we have partnered with the Port Angeles Food Bank, and it's the Beaver Health and a few other organizations to, um, have some community connection. And so we've decided, since there is a gap in some meals on a Friday afternoon, that we will have some lunches, probably sack lunches. So, uh, there will be some food there, but I would recommend to bring your lunch and bring one to share. See you there.
Wonderful, thank you, that's wonderful.
Hi, Tara Dama, City President. Uh, the reports that you guys do, um, maybe there should be a time constraint, but I also enjoy, you answer a lot of questions, you know, what are those chairs doing there? Well, what is this, you know, and so you answer about half the questions I had in my mind that I was gonna look up later, so thank you for that.
Uh, one comment, I've been here all night long, and, uh, we've been talking about the comprehensive plan. However, nothing on that plan has been addressed, and, you know, there's a list, you know, about one, maybe two fourteen that hangs on it, and I haven't heard about a single one on it. Could you, uh, clarify that, please?
Thank you. We will definitely try.
Well, my name's Gail Brawner, I'm a resident of Port Angeles for two years now. Everybody's being so nice, so I hate to bring this up, but I've been wanting to talk to the police chief, so I thought I'd just do it here, too. Um, about a month ago, or a little bit before that, um, I guess a group of young men, six young men were intimidating people downtown, and sorry if there's gonna follow up, I've been looking, couldn't find it. I did talk to some people downtown, and they said that when I told the police, uh, the police just laughed. And so I'm concerned about, um, different kinds of groups that are white supremacists and have, uh, far, that far-right meetings that are intimidating various communities, and some of the times, people won't speak up, because they are so intimidated. And so if there has been some, uh, something in the police department, if they have been, you know, trying to follow up on that, it would be great. Maybe if someone knows, I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you bringing that up, because, um, we really, it's, it's better to talk about it than not, and so I, I really appreciate you stating that. So I really appreciate you stating that. Anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to council on any item? All right. See, and then we have come to the end of our agenda, so we are adjourned. Thank you all.